All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, November 14th, 2023. It's now 10 o'clock. We're here for the regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance to our flags. Please stand.
Shall we bow? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for everything that you have given us. We ask you to bless this meeting. We ask you to use wisdom, knowledge, and beyond that, we ask you to continue blessing this body, this governmental body. We thank you for everything you have done. We would like to pray for those throughout the world that our peace has been taken away. We ask you to continue to bless this great country that we live in. In Christ's name, we ask all these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor this flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. This morning, we have Commissioners Hutchins, Monroe, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you have the minutes from October 24th, 2023, regular session. Entertained a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimonies. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Is there anybody? Mr. White.
I'm getting concerned that you say my name that way now.
Well, I hope you'll get out of front of the coffee pot next.
Now that I know the most important thing is your direction to the coffee pot, I will not be there next time. Good morning, Your Honor and distinguished Commissioners. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Friends of Merit Organization today, but I hope you're not too disappointed. I do not have a famous quote for you today. I was busy doing honeydews yesterday and didn't get home until 9:30, so I apologize for that. I'll do better next time. However, I do want to let you know the status of where we stand with all of our ETJ petitions. I've been informed that effective today that the final two ETJ releases from Farmersville will be approved and notices will be sent out, so all of the property within Hunt County will no longer be part of. However, we do have plans to have three community meetings in the next several weeks, Thursday, November 16th, November 30th, and December 7th, to address all outstanding questions and concerns in our community about potential incorporation. We do have a straw poll running right now, a dismal response so far of 61 votes, 55 for incorporation, three to accelerate annexation into Farmersville, which I shake my head, I don't understand, and three, please don't do anything, let's just keep it the way it is. Well, we can do that until change occurs. So, anyway, Farmersville has still not addressed our concerns regarding the annexation of the Chaparral Trail, and it's our understanding they don't intend to do anything, so it's going to create a conflict when we do for incorporation. We don't know exactly what they plan to do, but we'll see. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for your support. You guys are greatly appreciated, all you do for our county, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Martin. Anybody else wish to address the court today? Okay. Being known, we'll close the public testimony. New business, we have the consent calendar. Commissioners, I know we've had some questions on item five, so I'll remove item five from the consent calendar to be discussed after vote on the consent. Commissioners, wish to move anything else?
Only thing I want, I don't want to move anything, but on number 11, I want to clarify this for County Road 4121.
Okay.
4121.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So you'll get that added, Vicki?
Yes.
Okay. All right. With that one changed to it in pulling item five out, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item five, consent entered to a master premier lease agreement with supplier CTI Technology for the lease of equipment, copiers, and printers. Commissioners, we had a few questions raised about it. I don't know that everybody got their answers. If it's not, we'll table it. Philip, did you get your questions answered?
Yes, we can talk about it in executive session or whatever. Basically, I do have a problem with the way it's written up in reference. I have not a problem about leasing. I have a problem the way it's stated as far as the, this is a non-cancellable, irrevocable agreement, and this is on the first page. This agreement has not--
Did you not get the answer back from Daniel?
I was supposed to talk to him today.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll move it and talk about it in executive session then. All right. We'll move on then to action items under B, approval of accounts payable.
And make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers.
Make a motion to approve line item transfers.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments.
Make a motion to approve budget amendments.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll and personnel?
Make a motion to approve payroll and personnel?
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number one, quarterly report for the Hunt County Fire Associations. Brian?
Morning, gentlemen. Thank you all. For the quarter of July to September, the fire departments did a total response of 2,545 calls, especially during that high grass fire and burn ban season during the dry spell of the summer. Since then, we've moved out of that, been blessed with the rain and kind of excessive amount, a little bit of flooding that led to some high water rescues on that last session of rain earlier in October. Otherwise, we're falling now into the fall, again, getting into what would be an increased wildfire danger with the drying of our fuels and the colder weather, so not quite all the woods on the wildland side yet. As far as the updates with the fire departments, two grants were awarded over this last quarter. Wolf City Fire Department had a, I wish I could remember the exact amount, I did not write down, it's $150,000-plus federal grant for new SCBA's in the Wolf City Fire Department. Cash Fire Department was awarded a $20,000 fire rescue grant through the State of Texas and Texas Forest Service for fire rescue equipment. In October, a lot of these departments did an excellent job in getting out within their communities and doing fire protection, fire education, very big pickup in that with the fire department's participation in the local schools, very positive outlook and things, and educating the public in fire safety and educating our youth into continuing that. We do a good job of that and continue with that, and hopefully these numbers end up being less in the call volume with the more hire we do on the education side. With that, that concludes. Any questions? I do have the entire additional audit pages I'm going to give to Marshal Richard Hill.
Okay.
The hell, he'll have that if he needs to distribute that. I just didn't want to give you all a stack onto your desk.
Understood.
With all the other paperwork you have.
Thank you. Any questions? Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item two, an order reappointing Cheryl Lowery as purchasing agent for Hunt County for a free three-month term beginning October 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023. Commissioners, we failed to get this done in September. It should have been done, but the purchasing board met, which is myself and the district judges, and we unanimously reappointed Cheryl, making that recommendation to this court. Any questions? Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item three, we're going to move until after executive session. Action item number four, nominees for the Hunt County appraisal district board of directors for a one-year term. Commissioners, I'm going to table this till the next meeting. All the rules have changed on that board now, and there's going to be some elected positions as well as our appointed positions in tax collector, so there's still a few things up in the air, so I'm going to get some more information before I bring this back up. We have to do it by December 15th. We have to submit it, so we got time to make sure we're about all our understandings the way it should be, and just need a little more time, so we'll table till the next meeting. Action item six, request for permission for McKee Utilities to cross County Road 1043 with the Lake Ralph Hall pipeline. This work is anticipated to start 11/22/2023. McKee Utilities will be crossing the road following the attached construction details. The access road will be rerouted during the utility crossing, utilizing proper text dot detour signs. Construction will take approximately three days with the road detour in place. Contractor will notify the residents of the lane closure in advance in Precinct One.
Once we get done with this one, Judge, we need to take care of number five.
Oh, okay. I wrote table five, and it should have been four. My bad. Thank you. All right. Mark, you got any current questions, comments?
None, Judge. Other than that, items six through nine are the exact same request on different roads. If it would be appropriate, I would make a motion to approve them. It's for county roads 1043, 1088, 1100, and 1101 under the usual stipulations, if that would be appropriate.
Okay. We got a motion? Anybody?
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for items six, seven, and eight. And nine? Okay, thank you. All right. Back to number five, approval of annual auditors examination letter to the Texas Commission on Just Standards per Local Government Code, Chapter 351.0415D. Mary, you got any comments on it or any questions?
I've been audited.
Okay. Any questions? Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 10, upgrade of approximately 1,482 feet of County Road 1050 from dirt to rock and upgrade of approximately 1,222 feet of County Road 1050 from rock to oil sand in Precinct One. Money is an escrow.
Make a motion, we approve this upgrade?
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 11, the upgrade of approximately 850 feet of County Road 1114 from rock to oil sand in Precinct One. Money is an escrow.
Make a motion, we approve this upgrade?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 12, the upgrade of approximately 3,168 feet of County Road 3116 from rock to oil sand in Precinct Three at County's expense.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 13, upgrade of approximately 3,616.8 feet of County Road 3118 from rock to oil sand in Precinct Three at County's expense.
So moved, sir.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 14, upgrade of approximately 2,150 feet of County Road 4902 from dirt to rock and upgrade of approximately 1,100 feet of County Road 4825 from dirt to rock in Precinct Four. Money is an escrow.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 15, replat of Lot Four of Meadowview Acres in Precinct Two. Brian, you want to brief us?
Okay. Let me get to it here. So we've got a fairly simple, straightforward replat. They're splitting this thing into two lots. They have the OSSF shown. Everybody's got the proper frontage. Corner of FM Road, County Road 2277, which is W Drive.
All right. Any questions before we open it up for public comments? All right. At this time, I'll open it up to public comments for the replat of Lot Four of Meadowview Acres in Precinct Two. Anybody wish to speak for or against this item? Being known, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion for action item number 15.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 16, the final plat of Martinez Farms in Precinct One.
All right. Simple two-lot subdivision. Road had been brought up to county standard. Judge, whenever you and I reviewed this, we had some questions on their rounding, on the overall distances. They have not provided the final plat yet so that they can make these corrections, the grounding errors.
Make sure they get it in the legal correct, too. I don't remember if we checked that or not.
Yes.
Okay.
I commented to them and have not received the final, so.
Commissioners, whatever they're talking about, they put on their drawing on the north distance and south distance, 300.03 feet, but then they made the lots 150 foot wide, so there's 300. Somewhere, they rounded some errors, so it's a scribbler's error somewhere. They just want to get it cleaned up, make sure how it is on the legal. I forgot to look at the legal description. So, I entertain a motion for approval with the stipulation that they correct or explain to us how that differential in math is.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 17, the final plat of Sigh Enterprises addition in Precinct Three.
Simple three-lot plat. They have text dot approval for their driveways. They've paid for the upgrade for the right-of-way, and everything's up to county spec.
Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 18, final civil plans for Ron Sheen, a short-term rental community in Precinct Two. Ryan, did I say that right? Ryan? Close enough, maybe?
I always say Ran Chin, but I'm out of Texas, so culture is limited.
East Texas, boy.
That's it. I have a letter from the engineer as he's approved the plans, the civils, and the drainage for everything. Everything meets county standards, and it's a pretty simple three-unit, short-term rental community.
Okay. Any questions? Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Take your hands off.
Yes, sir. Action item 19, the acceptance of high bids received on resold properties as follows. Account number 86886, the bid was $2,905.18. Account number 86887, the bid was $2,905.18. Account number 86942, bid price was $7,737.58. Property 87007, bid price was $4,725.20. Property 87009, bid price was $5,086.89.
Judge, do these individual, I need a yea and a nay vote on each one.
So we need a voice vote on each one?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, I've read them all off on account number 86886. They've changed the rules on us this time, and we have to do a voice vote on each one of them. So Commissioner Hutchins, vote yea or nay on Selvick?
Yea.
Monroe?
Yea.
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 And I'm yea. Property 86887, all those in favor say aye, aye, yea, whatever you want to say.
So with a familiar aye.
There you go.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
I'm the same. All right. 86942, all those that are approving say aye. Commissioner Hutchins?
Aye, yea.
Aye.
Both Martin and Harrison and Judge, I vote for it. 87007 now?
Aye.
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 And I'm aye. Property 87009?
Aye.
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 All right. All of them unanimous? Do we all have to sign on that, too, or just me and you? Okay. All right. That's something new.
They don't have anything better to do down in Austin.
No, they don't. They need to get a life. I think they're getting one now since they've been there all year. All right. Anything else? Has Daniel said anything? No comments? Okay. All right. This time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under items one through four.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're in executive session at 10:23. Motion carries, we're in executive session at ten twenty-three.
We're back up Judge.
All right. We're back in regular session.
It's 11:22. Commissioners, we're back into regular agenda of new business. Number three, approve agreement and release with Encore Electric Delivery Company, LLC, for any damages or causes of action related to county property resulting from the construction of scatter brach, sub cattle mills, explorer, tap, 69 KV electric power line. Entertain a motion for approval.
A move?
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action under number, under consent, item number five, I need a motion to postpone till the November 28 meeting.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And then we need to, let me just a second, I think I brought that with me. All right, I entertain a motion to approve the proposal from MTG, Stoveall Engineers and Surveyors, for a study to be done at High Point. Harvest Bean. Harvest Bean Estates at a price of $29,900.
Judge, where's that money coming from?
Precinct full budget. We will, I guess we'll pay that out of contingency in a general line item, or we'll move money from contingent to the line item the auditors and accountants recommend us we use. Okay?
So move. Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business before the court today? Any other comments? Being none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at 11:25.